Yeah.
Are we ready? The time is seven o'clock and we'll call the order, the city council meeting for September 23rd, 2019. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Keller?
Here.
Mr. Browning?
Here.
Mr. Rohr? Mr. Hellinger?
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Here.
Mayor Riggle?
Here.
Motion to excuse calls, Mr. Rowan.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Shaffer, second by Mr. Jones. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaffer? Mayor Riggle?
Yes. Motion carries. Item two on the agenda, tonight's invocation will be given by Jennifer Klimansky. She's the administrative assistant for the City of Delaware's Fire Department, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you will all please stand.
Let's pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of gathering together here tonight. Lord, we thank you for the City of Delaware and we thank you for the leadership that is present here tonight, who serve the people so faithfully. We thank you for their commitment and their dedication. God, I pray that you would grant them wisdom and discernment as they make decisions and as they lead. Father, I thank you tonight for the fire department that is presenting this evening and I thank you for their courage, their bravery, their service to the people. Lord, I thank you for all of the first responders that are part of this great city and I pray that you would just put your hand of protection all around them as they go out day in and day out and continue to serve and care for the people. God, we thank you for just the privilege of being a part of this country and we just pray that you would just bless this city and that you would just continue to lead and guide and direct each one of us. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much Jennifer. Item four is the approval of motion summary, the regular meeting of council held September 9th as recorded and transcribed. What is the wish of council?
Move for approval, second.
Have a motion by Mr. Browning, the second by Mr. Shaffer. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes. And then we have an approval of motion summary of the work session meeting of council held on September 13th, 2019 as recorded and transcribed.
Move for approval, second.
Ditto. Okay, so motion by Mr. Browning, second by Mr. Shaffer, roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Epstein.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes. Motion carries. Item five is the consent agenda. Elaine, if you'll please read this into the record.
Item A, acceptance of the motion summary, the Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting held on July 10th, 2019 as recorded and transcribed. Item B, acceptance of the motion summary, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Meeting held on March 19th, 2019 as recorded and transcribed.
Thank you. What is the wish of council on the consent agenda?
Move for approval, second.
Did you say yes first?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Brown, motion by Mr. Browning, second by Mr. Shaffer. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item six is time set aside for letters, petitions, or any public comments for anything that is not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward at this time? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to committee reports. Mr. Jones?
I have none, Mayor.
Mrs. Keller?
I had the speeding meeting, the residential speeding meeting. It went very well and we had lots of citizens there. What ended up happening was lots of other issues besides speeding were mentioned, stop signs and crosswalks and all sorts of requests that are going to be forwarded on to the Parking and Safety Committee. They'll discuss those in their pre-meeting and then decide which ones will actually go on the agenda for the meeting and which ones need further study. So there's just lots of things coming from that meeting, but overall it was very well. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Browning?
Nothing.
Looks so serious all of a sudden.
Sorry, nothing to report, thank you.
Mr. Hellinger?
Nothing.
Mr. Shaffer? Okay. We'll do a presentation. Chief Donahue?
Good.
Good.
Each year, fire killers or injuries thousands of Americans and destroys and damages billions of dollars worth of property. Many of these fires may have been prevented by taking appropriate precautions and following safety guidelines. During Fire Prevention Week, we highlight the need to prevent and prepare for fires as we raise awareness for fire safety. Whereas each year, the National Fire Protection Association raises awareness during Fire Prevention Week. This year's theme is "Not Every Hero Wears a Cake." Play and practice your escape, which effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. Whereas many fires can be prevented by following precautions, families should still be prepared for the possibility of a fire by having working smoke alarms on every level of their home. Whereas families should also have a fire escape plan in place to help get everyone out of the house in case of an emergency and running through the room. Whereas when fire occurs, Americans depend on our courageous firefighters to be the first on the scene and to save lives. During Fire Prevention Week, we recognize these heroes and honor their sacrifice. Now therefore I, Mayor of the City of Delaware, to hereby proclaim October 6th through the 12th of 2019 to be Fire Prevention Week and I urge all citizens of Delaware to be aware of their surroundings, look for available ways out of an event of a fire or other emergency, respond when the smoke alarm sounds, and support the many public safety activities and efforts that the Delaware Fire and Emergency Service does during Fire Prevention Week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I bet you guys have a few words.
We do, and actually I'd like to introduce Lieutenant Bill Jones, who is in charge of our Risk Reduction Division, which what most people know is our Fire Prevention Division.
Thank you.
So you were okay?
I'm not really. Well, we do a lot of hard work, especially with some of the people here in the room. We have a partnership with the Planning Commission, the Building Department, a lot of the guys on the Fire Department, business owners, just citizens in general help us out. So it's a, it's a community-wide effort.
We appreciate everything you do, all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again. Now we're gonna have a director update. Chief Donahue, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. And as you see, I have the staff, and a lot of times I stand before you or sit before you and talk a lot about the Fire Department. But as I told, it's really the personnel back at the station and serving our community that make a difference to our community. And today with us, obviously you've met my administrative assistant, Jennifer Klimansky, who provided the invocation, but is my right-hand person in the office. But also representing our department, I'd like to introduce is Captain Jim Overly. Jim oversees our Professional Development Division. You just met Lieutenant Bill Jones, who oversees our Risk Reduction Division. We have Clint Archangel, who's a lieutenant. He's actually overseeing today's shift. He's in an acting captain's position today because Captain Lobdell is actually off. And finally, if, Alan, if you wouldn't mind standing up, this is Captain Madison. Captain Madison oversees our EMS division, but you'll notice that he's wearing a T-shirt. And I went ahead and authorized the wearing of T-shirts for the month of September. And this is for, and they've actually raised over $725 to the American Childhood Cancer Organization. So all of our firefighters you'll see with those yellow T-shirts on and very proud of the work that they do and you've seen them very active throughout our community, whether it's the Ball Ridge Program or Fire Prevention Week, MDA, the boot drive, our firefighters are always out giving, I'm very proud of them. And I know you see me, but it's really they that are continuing to make a difference in our community, so I thank you. But as I stand before you or sit before you today, I really like to say thank you, city councils, thank our city manager, and also our city staff. As Lieutenant Jones mentioned, we have a great working relationship and really depend on everybody else and we're just one spoke or cog in the wheel that makes the city go around and we're very proud to be here and be a part of that. So today, just briefly, what I'd like to talk a little bit about is your Fire Department. Talk a little bit about the 2010 fire levy, our pursuit for accreditation, our focus on the future and then the use of technology. And I'm gonna really start out with the use of your Fire Department and I say that is because our focus is not about us, it's about our community and as I say, yours, we look at both the internal and external stakeholders and it's essential that we align both of those together. While we have our personnel and our beliefs, it's essential that our direction also meets up with the desires of city council and our citizens here in our community. And we believe we really have done so, especially when you look at some of the survey reports that have come back, whether it be the Saperstein Study or our strategic plan that we've done, the feedback that we've gotten from our community. But the other thing I wanted to really highlight is our operation and this year we're projecting or on a pace to do 6,500 calls, that's almost 18, or 18 calls per day. And of course, the majority of those are EMS, but that's a 4% increase over last year and that just coincides really with the growth that we're seeing in our community. But the other thing I'm very proud of is that 87% of our personnel are dedicated to providing that service and that's a service that everybody knows about the Fire Department, that's those emergency services. The remainder are working either risk reduction, training, EMS, or the administration of this department. So let's talk a little bit about the 2010 fire levy. And this year, and actually in November, will mark the ninth year that we've been operating or since the passage of the 2010 fire levy in November. But there was four key components to that. The first one was building of Station 303, which was, began operations 2013. Station 304, which was really the completion of what we committed to the public of completing, opened on February 7th of this year. We've also replaced equipment or continuing to replace equipment, I think your personnel or our personnel will tell you, I think we have some of the finest, you know, pieces of equipment that allows us to serve our community. And I think you've seen that with the decrease in fires that have occurred or when they have occurred, limiting the amount of loss, but also the amount of lives that we're saving with some of the equipment that we have in place. And then the final component was the hiring of personnel and I think you've seen the growth of our community, the growth of our Fire Department. And as I mentioned, when we first passed this levy, I said I could've gone out and hired those 18 people, you know, the next day, but it wasn't about just hiring personnel, it was hiring the right personnel. And that took an extended period of time and I'm happy to say that we have accomplished that and I'm very proud of the personnel that we have hired. The nice thing about it is as we've completed these four pinnacle items that we sold to the public, we're not gonna stop continuing to focus and on our community. We're gonna continue to grow with this levy as was also expected. And as I made a commitment before city council and also to the public, we were not gonna go back for another levy, this is what we were gonna end up living off of from this point forward. So what's our future look like? One of the things that when I arrived here back in 2006 that I began talking about was accreditation. And my original goal was to seek accreditation by 2009, but I really held off on doing that and the reason for that was really the internal stakeholders that I had in my department. And that was trying to change a culture and change a belief, that there was a belief that accreditation was just a sticker on a truck and that, or a plaque that hung in the fire station. And that was not the case for our department. We were trying to change a culture within our department, which we have and are very proud to say, but it was really the accreditation module that was working in the background that we began focusing on. 2007, we created our first strategic plan and what the strategic plan is, is setting the goals, or also known as a master plan in many circles, is focusing on what that future Fire Department's gonna look like. What are the goals and objectives? How are we gonna get there and what are the resources that we need to take care of that? So our first one was completed in 2007 and we just updated that late last year and very proud that we're working off of that strategic plan now. The second component is also known as a community risk reduction and standard of cover. And what that is, is a document that we provide to our community and to our elected officials that identifies the level of service and why we provide the services that we do and how we are accomplishing those as well. That, our second one was just updated this year and I'm happy to say this, as well as our strategic plan, is available online to everybody. I believe you received links to those earlier this year and also last year when those documents were completed. The final item that we're working on is our 2000, what will be known as our 2020 self-assessment and that is the final component of accreditation. That's when we end up looking at all the aspects of the Fire Department and documenting if we're meeting these, this criteria or not. The interesting thing with the Fire Department accreditation is, is focused on performance, where many accreditations are focused on policy. Do you have this policy or this, or that policy? Ours is not. While they look at our policies and procedures, they look at actually bringing in self-assessors to look and make sure that the service that we say, based on our standard of covered, is being provided by our Fire Department. So we will be pursuing that and submitting all of our documents, our goal is by March of 2020. So why are we pursuing accreditation? Obviously, the first thing, and I hope that you've seen this for quite some time, is a continuous improvement of our Fire Department. It's the ability for both internally and externally for us to look at it. It's a dedication to excellence by our department and right now there's a little over 200 Fire Departments internationally that have been accredited. So this, this is a focus on excellence to all of our, to our Fire Department, but also to our community. It's communicating with our leadership on the philosophies of the Fire Department and why are we doing some of the steps that we're doing. It's also building positive relationships with elected officials, appointed officials, our community, but also for labor unions as well. We'll also be having somebody come in and one of the values of this is a validated group of people coming in from the outside and validating we're doing what we say we do. When you look at going to a hospital or you're looking at colleges for your children, you're always looking for schools that are accredited, hospitals that are accredited and that's what we want you to be able to look at our Fire Department as a accredited Fire Department. It also finally raises the profile of our community and our Fire Department. Next, I wanna talk a little bit about the focus of our future. And as I mentioned, we've been trying to shift how we operate for many years, but we've been using really what I call the five Es. And those are education, engineering, enforcement, economics, and also emergency response. Concerning education, obviously I think you've seen us doing more and more, educating the community, being involved with the community. The more that we can educate them on how to prevent fires or incidences, the better off our community is. As far as the engineering, this is also known as mitigation. What we're trying to do is take steps to prevent things from happening or lessening the impact of an event should it occur. Enforcement, unfortunately, there are times that we end up having to take action and write violations as far as fire code or building codes, but that's part of it. But we do this in a very positive manner. And as we try to, and at times we have to write down what the code violations are, since I've been here, we've never had to go to court for any one of those violations and I think that's a very positive item for our Risk Reduction Division. Economics, I think when you look at the responses that we have, whether, there's always an economic or a dollar value to that. And what I mean by that is if somebody has a fire or somebody has an injury or an illness and we transport them, there's a cost related to that. But there's also a cost for our Fire Department to operate and one of the focuses that we try to continuously work on is making sure that our cost of operation is not absorbent. And we wanna make sure that what it's costing our community is very reasonable. I think when you look at our costs in comparison to other like cities, we're on the lower one-third of that and I'm very proud of that. And finally, is making emergency responses. As I mentioned, we're gonna be doing 6,500 responses this year and that's a tremendous amount, but that's part of what we're doing is continuing to serve our community through that. So that's what we're gonna continue to focus on with our department. We're gonna do a lot more using technology. I think you've seen a lot from our department using this situational awareness, is getting a better understanding what is currently going on in our community and also our region and trying to adapt those type of resources. We do that, if there's weather conditions, we do that. If there's special events going on, we increase our staffing based on that. We're gonna continue to focus on understanding our performance and measurements. And finally, we'll identify areas for improvement, that's gonna be part of that continuous improvement process. So I just wanna show you a couple of things before I wrap up. Here are some of the things that we're starting to utilize and this is utilization of dashboards and you'll start seeing more of this start showing up in our monthly reports, but you'll start seeing more maps dealing with hotspots, you'll start seeing more what I call dashboard type of items, speedometers and so forth, that'll show our performance and this will be based on our shifts. And I think if you look over at our personnel, they'll start smiling because they've seen these things start showing up in discussion within the station of how their performance has been. But I think for us to be able to make improvements and us, we have to understand where we're at, so we'll be making those and working on that today, beginning today. Also, we were fortunate enough over, I guess about a year and a half ago, to receive a position at Data GIS, who's made a tremendous difference for us and really understanding our operations. But I wanted to show you some of the stuff that we've been working on, it's part of our standard of cover. If you notice, the buildings are all highlighted in different colors here. And what we have gone through is identified the risks based on an algorithm or matrix of our community. And what this is gonna allow us to do is better respond and better prepare our community to the various types of emergencies that we may be called upon. I say that because the green buildings that you see are the low hazard, the red buildings that you see there are high hazard buildings. So obviously, because when you look at the Ohio Wesleyan campus there, there's a lot of people there, those are older buildings, we lose one of those, may not be a financial impact, but from a historical standpoint, it's a huge impact for us. So those are some of the things that we've looked at and trying to identify the hazards. We're gonna begin utilizing that information to help us make responses to that, the level of responses, the type of personnel and type of equipment that we need to respond. But we're also gonna start utilizing this for our fire inspection program too and focusing more on, more inspections to those higher hazards and less on the lower hazards. Also, you'll notice on the color of the fire hydrants, and you'll notice a couple of different colors of fire hydrants. We've been able to work with our public utilities with mapping and identify the flow capabilities of each one of those hydrants. So that provides us a lot of valuable information that we respond, or as we're responding to the scene. So in conclusion, I want to thank you again for the support that we continuously receive from council and from our city manager and city staff. And as I mentioned, this is your Fire Department, it's not mine, so if there's ever anything that is needed or concerns that you have or suggestions, by all means feel free to let any one of us know. But I'm happy that we're really starting to take a different look at our community, not so much as what was done in the past, is this is the way we respond, this is the way we're always gonna respond to, taking a look at, doing a more managed risk type of approach and responses. So again, thank you and I'll entertain any questions at this point.
Questions or comments?
I wanna thank you and your department for the excellent job that you've consistently done year after year after year and I think I can speak for all of council to say, we're very grateful and very proud of our Fire Department.
Thank you.
I know you helped out with a neighbor who we saw several times having runs and Chaplin came forward and said, I think it's time to put this gentleman, help him get into a home and he fought tooth and nail from what I understand, I talked to him the other day and he's so much happier, he's back home, he's healthier, took care of the problems that he had that he just couldn't do on his own, so it was a tough decision, but I'm so glad you did it.
Well, and it is and fortunately Angie and Don, who are our two service coordinators, couldn't be here tonight, but as Captain Madison can tell you, they do a phenomenal job and very proud of the job that they do and you're absolutely right and I think we've made just one call since he's been home, which has been what, almost two and a half months, Alan? And so, I mean, when you look at that, a lot of times it takes a lot of steps and we had to get a court-appointed guardian to take care of him, but it works and we got him back to where he wanted to be and he's capable of living on his own now, so.
He called me last week, so thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, let's move on to.
Thanks, John.
Thank you very much. Item 10, which is consideration of a liquor permit. Elaine, if you wanna read this to the record?
Consideration of a liquor permit relating to a stockholder change for Liberty Fuel Incorporated doing business as London Road Shell at 132 London Road, Delaware, Ohio, 43015. Permit classes C1, C2, and D6.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. For consideration, this is just a stockholder transfer. Essentially, one, there are two owners, they're consolidating to one owner, no change in the business, there are no police issues or concerns at the business and recommend approving without a hearing.
Thank you. What is the wish of council?
I move for approval of the liquor permit.
Second.
The motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Shaffer. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yep. Thank you, as motion carries. Item 11 is the reading of Resolution Number 1940. Resolution adopting the 2020, it's a 2024 five-year capital improvement plan, CIP.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We know we have a work session scheduled for September.
A week from tonight.
Yeah. September 30th? At what time? 16:00?
6 o'clock, it's police and fire and then just any other additional issues that we might have regarding capital, but it's pretty much ready.
Okay. Item 12 and 13, if you'll read both of those, Elaine?
Ordinance Number 19-53, an ordinance approving a final subdivision plat request by Westport Homes for Springer Woods, Section 2, Phase 2, containing 21 single-family lots on approximately 5.471 acres, zoned R3, one-family residential district and located on Scarlet Drive and Aaron Drive. An ordinance Number 19-54, an ordinance approving a final subdivision plat request by Westport Homes for Springer Woods, Section 2, Phase 3, containing 22 single-family lots on approximately 5.65 acres, zoned R3, one-family residential district and located on Bevan Way and Aaron Drive.
Thank you. Ms. Chaplin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. These are final subdivision plats for Springer Woods, Section 2, 22, and 23. Take you through it here. Springer Woods is of course right off of Williams Street and actually goes all the way to Warrensburg Road. That monitor is not working this evening, so.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I turned it on, but it'd be all fuzzy for you and I think that would probably be worse. Then maybe turn it around a little bit. So these are the two sections involved in final plating this evening. They do involve 43 lots, basically more continuation of the same subdivision, which started about 20 years ago. So it's languished a little bit, but I think now with Westport Home, which is D.R. Horton being involved, they are picking up the pace considerably. The property is street-zoned R3, single-family residential district, no overlays, no planned mixed-use overlays or any of that sort of thing. Aerial photograph should we need to refer to it. And I just wanted to show this to you, we showed it to Planning Commission in a slightly different format. This is the best overall map we have at this point because Section 3 has been amended once and we are working with the developers now to amend it again. There have been lots taken out each time we amend it, basically for things. There have been lots taken out each time we amend it, basically for things to account for modern stormwater regulations, setbacks from stream corridors, and that sort of thing. But you can see here where Section One has been constructed and is being finished, actually, at this point in time. Section Two then comes, north is to the left. Section Two then comes down off of the main access drive, a portion of which is built. These are the two sections in question tonight before you for final plating. And I wanted to show you the Phase Three, and don't worry about this layout because it's changing, like I just said, but Phase Three is pretty much everything in yellow. And where that crosses in and why it took us a little bit of time to get this on your agenda in final form is that we had, we as staff had the wrong condition. We pulled the wrong condition relative to trees. Now, this has gone through a lot of discussion, as I say, and so we wanted to make sure, working with our development partners, that we had the right condition. It's still about making a payment in lieu of or planting the requisite number of trees, but we pulled an old condition. You had actually approved in twenty-fourteen with the, with the update, the amendment to Section Three, you had approved a payment per lot basis for the trees. Some of the trees are, a lot of the trees are coming out in Section Two, and some will come out in Section Three as well. But now we have an overall tree count. We sat back down with the developer and we said, okay, with where we're headed with Phase Three, you're probably not going to be able to plant the amount of caliper inches of trees that, you know, maybe we thought in twenty-fourteen when we went through this process. And so, working with them, we amended, and what's before you is a condition that requires instead of a thousand-dollar per lot payment in lieu of planting trees, one thousand three-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars per lot for the balance of lots in the subdivision. And that would satisfy the tree bill, so to speak, as council's aware. In street zoning, you can plant, you can make a payment in lieu of, or you can make a, do a combination of those things. You can also find a receiving area. In this case, it made sense for all parties involved, and we think we'll be able to administer this moving forward to receive a payment per lot. Terry Andrews is here today too from the developer, and he can confirm those discussions if you like. But that's what the overall is. And then contained in your packet is, again, fairly straightforward subdivision plats here for Section Two-Two and Section Two-Three. Your planning commission did recommend unanimous approval of these, as do we as staff with the amendment to the per lot tree payment in lieu of fee, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have one. Mr. Effland?
Yes.
I have a question about the street width.
Okay.
So I went out there and looked at the, I can't remember the names of the street. I think it's Scarlet and, is it Aaron Drive that will be continued?
Bevan and Scarlet, I believe.
Okay. Whatever the names are.
Yep.
They're not going, the, the existing street is fifty-six feet wide, is that correct?
I think that is correct. Because of when these started, Section One had different engineering specifications for street width and right-of-way width at the time. Section Two did as well, and so part of what our engineering department did, and we did as well with planning, is we worked with the developer to not have a, a street change width in the middle of a block.
That's what I was checking. So it's, it'll stay consistent?
It will stay consistent. Now, we did try to bring with, obviously it's taken a long time to develop, so a lot of things have changed. But with Section Three, then, we worked even harder and sharpened the pencil even more to account for things like stormwater management, stream corridor preservation zones, in addition to some of the right-of-way width and radii around the corners for our safety forces and also for public work. So it should, our goal, our collective goal was to not make it look kind of weird out there and change the street widths and that sort of thing, but keep the whole subdivision progressing in a manner that was fair to, to everybody and kind of balance these, these changes in our regulations through twenty years at this point. And it'll be longer than that to finish it.
That makes sense. Okay. Anything else?
I'm going to spin the rules requiring three readings, order is nineteen fifty-three.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Jones. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for approval of ordinance nineteen fifty-three.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Jones. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'm going to spin the rules requiring three readings, order is nineteen fifty-four.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Jones. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for approval of ordinance nineteen fifty-four.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Jones. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item fourteen is the second reading of ordinance number nineteen dash fifty-five. Lena, if you'll please read this to the record.
Ordinance number nineteen dash fifty-five, an ordinance supplementing the two thousand nineteen appropriations ordinance in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars and authorizing the city manager to enter an intergovernmental agreement with Pro's Consulting for a Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Thank you.
Just real quickly, and I know Ted's got a couple of comments, that this, this matter comes back to you after considerable discussion at the last council meeting and some feedback I received from, from council regarding the amount of the appropriation and the scope of the work. We're recommending, as you can see on the fact sheet, that we scale back the, the master plan to the needs assessment initially. The needs assessment is about forty-four thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. That will allow us to do the stakeholder engagement piece, the survey, which we think is imperative in terms of just getting a sense of what the public is thinking regarding recreation services. And then after, at that point, after that's completed, coming back to you and making a decision about the need to move into the second phase. So this was reviewed by the Parks Board at their meeting last week. I think they're in concurrence, and it would, I, I think, allow us to proceed at this point in a, in a important endeavor right now, given our just discussions regarding recreation services and, and the best, best way to deliver those services. So with that said.
Yeah, we did meet with Parks Board last week and discussed what we're looking at doing this first, just the first phase initially, the needs assessment, and, and, you know, answering those questions that we have when it comes to recreation programming and our facility needs in Delaware. But they were, they were in an agreement. They were already looking, they recommended moving forward with the, the needs assessment portion of it also.
And I forgot to put in the packet, but the, the cost of the project back in two thousand, when we did the last Parks Master Plan, was forty, was thirty-nine thousand five hundred. And that was in two thousand, so. And you didn't, we didn't have a, a survey component of that. We have it here. There was also a request at the last meeting, I believe from Vice Mayor Schaefer, regarding having representatives from Pro's at this meeting tonight. They weren't able to be either in a conference, but I would commit to bringing them back at a future meeting as we, as we start to define the scope, that they come back and meet with city council and just talk about their approach to the project. I think this is a firm that I think can assist us in the, the issues that we're dealing with right now, and I think they're well-equipped to do it. And given their experience, we've talked about it before, especially dealing in communities that have YMCA's, whether it was Huber Heights or others, that can be helpful to us. So we're recommending that you amend the, you amend the ordinance in the amount of forty-four thousand three hundred and sixty dollars, and that you would amend it, and Section One would go from thirty-five thousand to forty-four hundred dollars. So actually, we'd be taking most of the money from the park exemption fund, forty-four hundred from the, from the Parks Impact Fee Fund. And then if you decide to move ahead with the next phase, we would get another appropriation before. Any questions or comments? I know this has been a...
I just have one. In addition to all the discussion over recreation services and guidance this year, if you think what, we've also got a master plan for the airport and a master plan for the cemetery, and I think our parks and our rec services deserve the same kind of input, the same kind of information for us to make decisions from.
Right. Initially, I had sticker shock, and then Tom shared the price of the previous one. And I was like, wow, I mean, it's not that bad of a deal, so I'm, I'm good.
I like the phased approach.
Yeah, it gives everybody an opportunity to have input.
So do we need to make a motion to amend this ordinance?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to amend ordinance nineteen fifty-five to reflect Phase One only at a cost of forty-four thousand three hundred and sixty dollars.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Browning. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
And then maybe...
And then maybe Section One be amended to thirty-four hundred dollars. It's thirty-five thousand. You're reducing the overall appropriation, so.
Right. Okay, so we're, what are we, what, Section One and Section Two?
Section One, where it says professional services, thirty-five thousand. That would be forty-four hundred dollars.
Forty-four hundred, and the other stays at...
At forty thousand. That gives you the, I just rounded it up.
Okay. So I will make a second amendment to ordinance nineteen fifty-five reflecting Section One amount to be forty-four hundred dollars and Section Two amount to be forty thousand dollars.
That one will stay the same.
Right.
So just Section One.
Just the first part of that. Second.
So a motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Browning. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
I'll move to spin the rules requiring three readings, order is nineteen fifty-five.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Browning. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
I'll move for approval of ordinance nineteen fifty-five as amended.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Browning. Any further discussion? The only thing that I ask is when the reports come in, we see the first draft. Roll call, please. Okay. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thanks, Ted. Okay, item fifteen is consideration of Resolution number nineteen forty-four, dash forty-four. Please read this to the record.
Resolution number nineteen dash forty-four, resolution authorizing the city manager to sign and enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Delaware County Commissioners for Indigent Defense Services for Municipal Code Violation.
Madam Mayor, members of council, this, and it's a right of annual, annual right of tradition, we always pass this ordinance as required by the state public defender's office by way of history. We used to have an agreement that basically said it stays active until either party cancels it. We call that an evergreen contract, but the state decided they wanted to make sure that action was taken every year, so they require us to pass an ordinance, our resolution allowing us to continue this agreement. Terms haven't changed since last year, and in fact, we usually don't cite under city code that requires jail time, so they don't even get a public defender. So while this is a place that that happens, in those cases, we cite under the city code. So I don't think we've ever had to pay anything under this agreement. Happy to answer questions you might have.
Questions? Motion?
Move for approval of Resolution nineteen forty-four? Second.
Motion by Mr. Browning, second by Mr. Jones. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes. Motion carries.
And item sixteen is consideration of Resolution number nineteen dash forty-five, a resolution adopting guidelines for readings of the city of Delaware.
One thing I will point out, we had other discussions at the meetings, at the last meeting where we discussed this, to consider further ways of streamline meetings, which would be the types of things we would even need to bring to council versus maybe having the, the ability to do it at administrative level. That's a, a bigger project that Dave and I will, will take on working, but obviously we, we couldn't get that done as part of this, but we have not forgotten about that.
So I've been mulling one thing over. Interested in, interested in thoughts on is guideline number two, specifically the B section. Kind of related to what Darren said, we're talking about approving things after only one reading. And plats, because of the nature of what they are, I think that makes sense. I do have a small concern about development plans at a first reading, because that gives very little time for anyone to become aware that the development plan is happening. Now, it doesn't say that we have to suspend the rules at reading one, but I'm kind of, I think two readings, I feel comfortable with development plans.
What if we added the word "final" to that? Because those are really the ones we tend to approve, because they've already been through the process.
That makes more sense.
Because I agree with you, but the first time through, we're not going to be that much reading.
Right.
That's a very easy change to make. If you're interested in passing it tonight, you can do the same thing you just did and amend it, and then we'll go back and make that change, or we can certainly go back and bring it up to the next meeting, but that's so small, you could probably just amend it from the floor.
Are you okay to just make an amendment?
Yeah, I think. Does everyone else agree that?
Yeah.
In general, so do we need to add that, or?
Add the word "final."
Yeah, add the word "final."
Final, but do we need to add in general, development plans will go to two readings? Because that's not covered anywhere. Development plans that don't require a formal public hearing.
Depends on how specific you want to get. If you, if you, if you put the word "final" in, which is sort of the easy, we can get done right now fix, what you've done is you've kind of said, when it's not required, it might go one, and here are two examples, and you've kind of pointed the, the obvious one out, which you are correct, someone could say, well, this isn't a final plan, but it doesn't require code, so would you consider one? So it, it wouldn't be a hundred percent ironclad.[1655.02] So it, it wouldn't be a hundred percent ironclad, I would point out that this is sort of a guideline intended to give people sort of a, a feeling of what's going on, so it's not as, it's not like a written process you have to follow, so we could go back and tinker with the language if you want to be more locked down, but I think if you just said final, you would at least say, these are the two examples that we're telling you might be one, we haven't told you all development plans, and that might give people some guidance. I realize I'm kind of chattering on, but does that make any sense?
No, that does, I'm okay with that.
By, by taking this and putting a lot more of it out of administration, is it going to cause you and the planning department more work or less?
Well, we're, we're not having necessarily that, that would be a change in code, and we're not having that conversation yet tonight, but I think at some point, we're probably, that's the second phase of the work that I think you asked us to do. It may or may not, not having to prepare staff reports and all that sort of thing relieves some of that, but, but to your point, yeah, I mean, it would be potentially some additional work for us as well, but I think, I think overall, if we find the right balance, it would, it could make a lesson.
Okay. All you want to do is add to your, your point.
Well, I appreciate that very much.
I don't want to answer for, for Dave's shock, but there's nothing that comes to council now that they haven't put extensive amount of work in anyway.
Yeah, we're putting work in, then we come through planning and council, and then we have to put more work in on the building and zoning permit side of things, so it's, overall, probably relieves a step of that.
Okay, so I make a motion to amend the guidelines for ordinance readings, specifically section two B, and add the word final before development plans.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Schaefer, roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
I move for consider, I move for adoption of resolution nineteen dash forty-five as amended.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Schaefer, any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes, motion carries. Thanks for all your work on that, Darren and Dave. Okay, item seventeen is consideration of ordinance number nineteen dash fifty-six.
Ordinance number nineteen dash fifty-six, an ordinance supplementing the two thousand nineteen appropriations ordinance to provide for a supplemental appropriation to allow a refund of previously collected impact fees related to the bur oak commons, AKA, as known as trepless development.
Dave, you want to take a stab at this one? Or you want me to?
Sure. Madam Mayor, members of council, these are, this is supplemental appropriation that would allow us to refund fees we collected last year relative to some impact fees for the trepless or bur oak development. Preparedness maps in your packet, that's the trepless development. There was a little bit of research that went into, what goes back to nineteen ninety, and so I won't go into all that, I think we detailed it in memo format, summary format, I think pretty well for you, but we would just take you through this very briefly in that we called out four tracks that are relative to nineteen ninety agreement that essentially created Smith Park as we know it today. That was the granting of the parkland required for an overall five hundred and sixty some odd acre Troy Farms development at the time, that was Westfield Hills, that was the Hook Track, that was Treplis, that was Troy Farms apartment, it was a big, big area. And so on this map, as you know, Hanover Court was built, Troy Farm apartment are built, the one piece, Treplis's building, the one piece that is not built yet and is still vacant is the Hook Track. So long and short of it from the nineteen ninety agreement and then a settlement, lawsuit settlement in two thousand and three, which amended that agreement, is that the Hook Track wouldn't have to provide any parkland dedication, because Smith Park was essentially that in summary. So then, there were certain impact fees called out at the time, and I think essentially, these were starting to come through as we were contemplating impact fees in the, in the early aughts, obviously, it started back in nineteen ninety for some of this development, long before impact fees. And those were determined in different ways, but it's basically all the impact fees we know, except for the municipal fee that we have today. And so you'll see the refund is for everything except for municipal fees, impact fees. Since during this year, we have not charged trepless impact fees, and so those are not being refunded, based on the research that we've done, but it's taken us a while to get this legislation to you.
Dave, if you might jump in real quick to clarify?
Sure, go ahead.
So what happened was, we charged them the regular impact fees that any development would do, that settlement document that Dave referred to spelled out, they will not be responsible for the, I think, police, fire, and recreation impact fees.
Right.
And it's not part of our standard code, so we didn't catch it until we found the settlement and did the research that Dave talked about, so they normally would be responsible for it, but because of the lawsuit settlement, we agreed that they wouldn't have to pay it, so that's why we're, where we are today.
Have to follow through with that, obviously, but the rest of, what, what it said was, it called out these certain tracks that wouldn't have to pay impact fees, but all the other tracks within the, the then Troy Farms five hundred and sixty-four acre development would have to pay those impact fees. And so those have been collected through the years for pieces that have been built, and, you know, as I say, the Hook Track is the only one that is vacant at this time in trepless, obviously, development. Happy to answer any questions or go in more detail should you desire it, but we recommend approval so that we can get this developer the, the refund that they're due.
Any questions? Any motions?
I move to suspend rules requiring reading of ordinance nineteen fifty-six.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Jones, roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for approval of ordinance nineteen fifty-six?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Jones, any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes, motion carries. Item eighteen is consideration of ordinance number nineteen dash fifty-seven.
Ordinance number nineteen dash fifty-seven, an ordinance supplementing the two thousand nineteen appropriations ordinance to provide additional funding for cemetery improvement design work and for additional cemetery maintenance funding and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause of this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to provide for the public peace, safety, health, and welfare of the city, and for the further reason to provide for the maintenance work at the cemetery to be undertaken before winter, winter weather hits, and to start the master plan recommended improvement design work so that it may be completed before issuing bids early next year, and as such, will be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll take it, thanks, Mayor. This supplemental is a follow-up to the discussion we had at our CIP meeting a week or so ago, and enables us to move forward with some of the proposed improvements in the cemetery master plan. We had appropriated some funds this year to start the actual design work to do some of those, but I think Ted's reached out to one of the consultants that will probably seriously consider to do the work, and they gave us a, a quote that would enable us to complete all the design work, even though the actual first phases of it may not be the complete recommendations. Ted indicated it just makes sense to have it all planned out in advance, and, and as we, as the, you know, resources become available, we can keep moving right through the, through the plan. The other element included in the supplemental relates to starting to fix some of the monuments that are damaged out there. This won't accomplish all of it, we'll follow up next year, but this gets us the ability to get started yet this year, and then try to, you know, tackle some of the, the ones that are pretty apparent to people as they, you know, travel through the cemetery. We did reach out to Longstreet, and they, they're pretty confident they'll be able to get a fair amount of work done yet this year before winter sets in, so entertain any questions you may have.
Any questions?
I move to suspend rules requiring reading of ordinance nineteen fifty-seven.
Second. Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mrs. Keller, roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Item nineteen is a discussion item. Imagine that.
Just thought the evening was going to be early.
Are you telling me it's not now?
No, 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 I just, I don't want to jinx anything. So council had asked, a couple of council meetings ago, in connection with discussions regarding the city's partnership with the YMCA, and in particular, the summer aquatics program, there was discussion, and really some direction, there was direction that we considered taking back the pool operations beginning as early as two thousand twenty, and I had asked for council's consideration of a report that we would put together and just kind of review with you the kind of bigger picture of that type of a program, what's entailed in running it, and some recommendations about if you are, if, if the city does want to, to resume an operation that we used to operate, that we were recommending, staff was recommending, that we consider that as part of the contract, the overall contract with the Y that expires at the end of two thousand twenty. So we have put together a report which reviews the cost of, estimated cost of the program, we tried to gather as much information as, as we can with respect to the revenue and cost side, when the Y ran it, when the Y, as the Y has been running it, and we're, we're here to review that with you this evening, and get your thoughts. It's a, it is one of the most labor-intensive recreation programs, because it requires approximately seventy-five seasonal employees, and those seasonal employees are everything from lifeguards to assistant cashiers to managers to different swim instructors, of course, lifeguard, so it's, it takes a lot to gear up for something like that, so anyway, we just, I wanted to be for, I wanted to get some firm direction from council, before I got that, I wanted at least an opportunity to review with you what, what would be involved for the city to do this, and so that's, the report is there, and Kyle and Ted were the primary authors of the report, and spent most of the time gathering the, the information that, that's included in it, so.
George, you've been awful quiet tonight, any comments on this report?
Um, I didn't spend as much time on it as what I wanted to, but I did have a question when, when, as I looked down through it, we talked about the YMCA charging the three dollar per unit per month, and I believe that was per unit, right? It was not per, per individual member, but that was a point of clarification that I wanted to.
I believe, I, I believe it is a per unit, I, I'll verify that, though.
Okay, because, because I know in our previous discussions, you know, there's a huge disparity between member unit and physical individual members.
Right, right, a unit could be five people.
Yeah, a unit could be five people, it's three bucks a month, that's a heck of a deal, so, but that was, that was one thing that really just kind of popped out at me, and not, not really having a good understanding of all the revenue streams coming in. I didn't really see where we were able to really call that out as to like what the Y's revenue streams were for J flow in like this past year, from way of gate receipts and, 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 you know, just the whole, everything combined, it just seemed like there was a lot of, there was a lot of smoke.
Well, do they have their numbers together for this year? I mean, I know it just closed.
Well, yeah.
Labor Day, but.
Yeah, well, and I'm not even saying this year, just for like eighteen, you know, to really know what those numbers were, because it seems like we, just like how we say, well, we're giving you guys two hundred and four thousand dollars, but that includes everything.
Mm-hmm.
And it's like, well, and we need to separate that out, we need to determine, I don't want to say, but we need to determine what they, where their costs lie, and how much of that two hundred and four thousand dollars is going towards rec services, what's going towards the pool. I would say, my assumption is the vast majority of that's going towards rec services, and the pool, I think, is still holding its own, and actually is probably supplementing the rest of that agreement. But I just don't have, I couldn't find the numbers really to put together to justify that, so I'm kind of in a quandary.
And I will say, you know, it was, we based our numbers off of when the city used to run the outdoor pool and rec programs, along with what information we were able to gather from the Y, but George, as you mentioned, because it is a package, it's hard to determine what costs go where, what revenues come from where, so we had to build in a fair amount of assumptions, but, but a part of the analysis also came from reaching out to the Westervilles, you know, our neighbors, to kind of get an idea of, really, are the pool operations cost centers, or are they, are they, are they neutral? And really, and Ted can attest, there, there was a decent range of, you know, a hundred thousand dollars in the red to ten thousand, you know, in the black, so I think it really depends on probably more of those cities philosophies on subsidizing, keeping the rates down, and again, that's, that's something, you know, that, that, that staff ultimately kind of needs to get from council as well, and, and as Tom had mentioned, that's where I think this pros consulting exercise will really help to see what, you know, if we are to build this rec department, again, essentially, we'll have better information to say, if soccer is the main need, then we're going to look at people with a strong soccer background, so I, I think those are the things that will, will help through this exercise, but for the purposes of this report, and just in, in full transparency, you know, we've, we've continued to work weekly with the, the Y leadership, so Ted, myself, Tony, Lolita had a call this morning, and, you know, we let them know, they're fully aware that council has asked for this analysis, and, but we also let the Y know that, you know, no decisions have been made at this point, it's a, it's a conversation for this evening, so staff can get better direction, but the, all the options are still on the table. Continuing, continuing to be a partner is an option, evaluating, should the city want to take back aquatics and rec is an option, looking at other providers or other partnerships is an option. We let them know in good faith, and I think, you know, Ted and Lisa and George can attest, you know, we, we want this partnership to work, and we, we worked hard at it, and we continue to work hard at it, but at the same time, there's been a level of frustration on, on both sides of the table, I believe, along with some of the members, so ultimately, I think it's our goal to have a parks and rec operation that we can all be proud of, and we feel that we're making the proper, the proper decisions that best serve the community, so really, we're, we're here to create the best opportunities and the, and the best programs that we can, but, but really, we're kind of asking to get the temperature from council and, you know, your direction.
And, and you know, the, the other piece that just sticks in the back of my, my mind on this whole thing was, if we had, bite my tongue, if we had not allowed this co-branding, if we had had the YMCA functioning as our contractor, wearing Delaware city apparel, not affiliating themselves with the YMCA, I don't think we would be sitting here having this discussion today. I, I honestly believe that this whole co-branding crap just really brought everything to the surface, because we all know that if we take this over, and I know that the trepidation that, that you feel, Tom, in that, you know, this is a big operation, and we're going to stub our toes, and we may not do any better than what the Y did, okay, but our citizens then say, okay, now, I know who to come to, I come to the Y, I come to the city, I don't go to the Y, I don't even know who the Y is, they don't, they don't count anymore. I think a large portion of this entire issue has been because of the silly, indefensible co-branding that we allowed to go on in the name of some type of partnership, it's like, you're our contractor, you represent yourself as, hey, you know, I was a contractor for Time Warner. But, our citizens then say, okay, now, I know who to come to. I come to the Y, I come to the city. I don't go to the Y. I don't even know who the Y is. They don't, they don't count anymore. I think a large portion of this entire issue has been because of the silly, indefensible co-branding that we allowed to go on in the name of some type of partnership. It's like, you're our contractor, you represent yourself as, hey, you know, I was a contractor for Time Warner. I wear Time Warner apparel. Everybody thought I was a Time Warner employee. I was a contractor there for five years. Nobody knew me from Adam, you know? But, that, that's what, when people come to our pool, I don't care if it's Columbus Aquatics runs it or the YMCA or we run it, they need to say that as far as our consumers are concerned, it is a Delaware City property. And if I have a problem, you know what? I'm going to call Ted or I'm going to call Tom. I'm going to call whoever in the city and then it just gets taken care of.
But if the Y is still our contractor, then we're limited in terms of what we can take care of. I mean, I got an email over the weekend that I just forwarded. The only thing that I can say to the person that reached out to me is, I'm really sorry, this was your experience. I'm going to forward it to the Y and hope they get back with you. That's all I can say. I can't say a whole lot other than that because the Y is our contractor and that's all we can do.
Well, I think that also comes back to part of your, and again, your contractual agreements you have in place, to your point. But, you know, if they say, if they call you, you say, okay, I'm going to tell Tom, Tom's going to tell Ted, it's going to get handled. You know, once you say, oh, well, now we have this contracted, you know, we can't really do this. I think that's all, I mean, typical contractual service agreements, I think we got taken to the cleaner on the whole thing. Quite honestly, because I don't think we, I don't think we, how do I want to say, defended our own position. I think we gave them much to, because we all wanted to be Lucy Goosey partnership. And it's like, no, you work for us. You are our vendor. You work for us and this is what we expect out of you. And then we hold their feet to the fire. But again, I don't think we would even have this conversation if people said, that's, that's Delaware City Pool. I'm going to Tom, it's going to get taken care of and it gets, it just gets resolved. So, there's multiple pieces there and the contractual agreement is part of that. But that all comes back to this, oh, we all want to be one big happy family with the Y.
Councilor Haldra, if you don't mind me asking a follow-up question, are you referring to our rec services agreement or the lease?
No, I'm, I'm talking rec services, aquatics, yeah.
Based on the twenty eighteen annual report, the, the pool, from the YMCA, the pool was operating at a deficit of about sixty thousand. And, and then with rec services combined with the pool, they were operating at a deficit of about five thousand. But that's the twenty eighteen annual report that they delivered to us. So, the pool was operating at a deficit according to them and the recreation program was making some money.
But they didn't include the three dollars per membership unit into that.
Into the, the revenues of the pool?
Correct.
I, I can't say for sure.
That they're missing something. I've seen what they've submitted over the years and there's, there's a huge disparity in revenue. So, either they have their members that aren't, that's going into a different, different pot that they're, that they're allowing to swim at Minggo or, you know, the, the demand for people swimming there has gone down by sixty-six percent in, in the years that, since they took it over. It's hard to imagine that it would drop that much. My sense is they don't, not showing all the, what otherwise would be the pool revenue because they, you know, they have members that pay for the Y membership and I think they get to use the pool.
So, these numbers in the budget detail that are highlighted in yellow, twenty twenty projected went down to a hundred eight thousand. So, that was less than two thousand and eight. Now, some of the numbers below that went up just a smidge, but yet the wages are crazy. I mean, where did, where did we come up with this hundred eight thousand number? I mean, last eleven was one twenty-six, ten was one twenty-two. Where'd we come up with a hundred eight thousand? Do you know?
One of the things we included was aquatic specialist in there where we used, similar to the golf course where we used, we estimated that sixty percent of their salary would go towards the pool wages and the forty percent would go towards recreation programming in the future. So, it wasn't a full-time, year-round aquatic specialist. So, their wages were included in that, that projected amount. And then the, the addition of the, the membership fees, that, that we took an estimate since the pool, or an average since the pool was renovated, so from two thousand eight forward and, and estimated that in there to, to come up with that hundred eight thousand. In, in addition to what Dean was referring to, you know, the memberships were, as you see, above a hundred thousand and, and per the Y's annual report, I think memberships were at thirty thousand. So, that, that's the part of that big discrepancy that's in there with their reports versus our reports.
For me, it's just an issue of how long have we been dealing with some of these things? And what amount of staff time are we spending dealing with some of these things? And I went back to my email that sort of started a bunch of this from June twenty-sixth from Jackie Walker. And, you know, talking about lifeguard smoking and vaping in their chairs and lifeguards turning their backs on the pool, texting in their chairs, people being allowed to do flips off the diving boards, middle pool closed due to a lack of chlorine. She says in this email, as the risk manager for the city of Delaware, I'm on the verge of recommending that the pool be shut down and all the members' money refunded immediately. She says, this is a serious issue. It's not being blown out of proportion. Running a pool is a serious responsibility. I insist on a response to this email. And part of the reason was because there were multiple complaints being made without response. So, obviously, that's a really emotional, that sort of brought the whole community to a lot of council members. But what I did was I sort of went through my emails going back many, many, many years. And I pulled up emails from two thousand thirteen when we were still talking about similar things at the pool. And I have an email here from a Y employee. And I have copies of all of these for you, but talking about no chlorine in the pool back in two thousand thirteen. Talking about an incident that happened where there were lifeguards, lifeguards that didn't respond to someone hitting their head at the bottom of the pool. And this particular person had to stabilize their head and neck. Lifeguards who were told to lie about chemical levels. This person contacted the health department to report problems with chemicals. This was in two thousand thirteen. So, I guess my expectation would be somewhere between two thousand thirteen and two thousand nineteen, this agency that we've contracted with would have solved these issues without requiring an entire summer of intervention from our staff in two thousand nineteen. And I wish that it was a different way. And I spent a lot of years working and being on this advisory committee hoping that with each new leader, that things would turn around. And I think that this summer was my turning point of saying, I can't support this anymore, not with the, the rec services and the management of the pool. And I think that the Y is doing a lot of great things at the community center itself and that perhaps this was just more than they could manage. I'm not sure where the breakdown was. I don't think we had problems as severe as this summer every year since two thousand thirteen, but there were certainly inklings of this running through. This wasn't a new problem that popped up. So, due to those safety concerns, I've said it before, I think we have to do what we have to do to take management of the pool back. Not another summer, just for the safety concerns that were presented, significant ones, gates left open, pools without chlorine. And I'm worried about our own liability if we don't, if something were to happen.
I think the other side of this is just the, our ability to ramp up and be ready to take this over next year as opposed to figuring out a way to stay on top of that situation and making a decision down the road. I just think we, it's going to be a difficult situation here to put it all together. And the, the thing is, we're not sure that even if we do that, that all these problems are going to get solved, you know? So, do, do we want to try and rush to get that done next year? If we want to try and stay on top of the situation for next year, then if our plan is to take it over, give ourselves enough time to do it right.
I think that that's also a possibility. I'm willing to entertain that. I think that if we do that, we need to deduct a significant amount from the money that we're paying them if it's going to require that much oversight from us. I would suggest adjusting the rate that we're paying them if we're spending lots and lots of staff time managing a pool that we're paying them to manage.
Be right from the liability standpoint, we, we at this point have to stay on top of the situation out there. Whether they're running or we're running, we've got to have better handles going on.
I had asked Tom to reach out to a previous park and rec person that worked there at the pool. Darren is the one.
Hurley.
Darren Hurley. Because there was always problems, but I'd like to, for him to come in and talk to us and it's been a long time. See what problems he had and see how they compare to what we're doing. So, I was hoping...
That was back when we, when we ran.
When we ran, yes. I was hoping he wouldn't have been here tonight, but if you could reach out to him and see if he can be here and then we can have questions for him to...
Yeah, we can certainly do that. I mean, I, I think also you, I'm looking at a memo that we wrote to council back in two thousand twelve when we were making the decision to contract. Our budgets were tight. It's not going to be a whole lot different probably in the next few years going forward. It's always been this situation where it's, we talked about it before, where it's, it's capacity to do the things that we have the expectations for is just sometimes not there. I mean, this memo from Alan was talking about, you know, if we, if we don't move ahead with the contracting with the Y for rec services, are, do we have as the city the ability in that two thousand twelve when budgets were tight to operate a recreation services department at that level that we wanted? Some of this was the economies achieved, some of them, by having collaboration between two entities that do similar things. I mean, if you ask Roger Hanifin, who's been at the Y for a number of years, about that whole philosophy, that was something that was intriguing, was that here you were having two entities that you didn't want to overlap and you didn't want to duplicate. So, this was wanting to do it, one way to do it. I think part of the challenge has been keeping on top of managing that contract in a way that ensures that you don't have these gaps. I think George's point about the co-branding is, is more, you know, that's philosophical. I, I get the point, but I also get that they're a recreation provider. And, you know, that's, that's always been that, and we, we've talked about that. We've had honest disagreements about that. But I, but I understand the point about accountability is more assured if there's less confusion over, well, who's, you know, who's, who's in charge here? And so, I, I get that. I respect that, that point of view. But we can certainly, as part of the, you know, the, the council's consideration, request Mr. Hurley at, at the next meeting and, and...
I don't even know, is he still around?
Yeah, he's the Worthing, he lives in the city. He's, he works for the city of Worthington. But he left right as we were, right as we were opening the community center, so I think that would be helpful.
Any other comments for the evening, though? Jim Helfer will call. You didn't say much.
I, you know, I'm, as much as I want the Y to work out, because I think, I think that's a, it's a good organization. But then this, I know it's not totally related, but this email about the riptide being capped at twenty people, that kind of honked me off because I was like, wait a second, this is just another example of, hey, everything's good and we're doing this.
Exactly.
We're like, what? When the team has a hundred-plus kids. So, I was a little disappointed. So, I think, I, I'm still trying to think accountability to somehow match that in there somewhere. But I, I, I think, I don't know, I, I, under the, the current arrangement, I think I'd really prefer the city to do the pool. Maybe not next year, but...
I, I do want to respond that might be helpful or not helpful. When we wrote the YMCA agreement, the big issue we had at the time, because we never knew what would happen, was will the prices be the same for our residents? So, we didn't want to turn over all these programs and then have the rates get tripled. So, we built in protections. You will charge this amount unless you meet with us with data and we give, agree to raise it. We can't, obviously couldn't anticipate all the things, but to George's concerns about managing that contract, if we do to continue to have this arrangement, we can build in performance measures. And hopefully, we can have a better idea of what those are now, that we've seen it working and hold them accountable to meeting those performance measures. And it could be, you know, days the pools open with maximum, you know, you're going to let five hundred people in or whatever it is. We can build in whatever we could and we can, you know, dock payments or come up with other penalties for not meeting that. So, if there is a appetite for continuing, but you want more protection and more of a stick, we can negotiate that into the contract. We just didn't anticipate that when we did it because we didn't know what we didn't know.
Since Darren brought up the, the rates and how they needed approval before they were raised, one of the issues I brought up to Tom this morning was I discovered that they went ahead and raised those rates anyway. That has since been fixed, but what's the status of getting us a list of people who qualify for refunds? Was there any progress made on that today?
We didn't cover, no, I can get the list. They, they were going to be making refunds to everybody that had overpaid, but I don't have a list of that, so I can get that list from them. I can request that.
Lisa, I'm sorry. I, so I was, I'm confused. I thought your question was as to the ten percent piece.
No, that was, there was a new issue that was discovered where people were overcharged.
Right, I know that. So, you wanted that compilation, you wanted that report of who, okay. I, I'm sorry. I thought it was the membership.
No, those people were overcharged too.
That's right, right. No, I know that and I, okay.
I was talking about the recreation.
And they provided those, I think what we wanted to report back that they made those people whole.
Yeah, we verified, I, I think a week or so ago, that they were going to give refunds to those people that were in recreation programming that were overcharged. And I just don't have a list of those people, but I can request that.
Okay, I'd like to just see how many that was.
Okay.
And how they plan on offering those refunds? Because I know, I'm one of the families that is owed a refund and I haven't heard anything.
Okay. Well, we can, we will arrange to have Darren here or hopefully somebody at your next meeting and just get direction from council. But I, that would be helpful. So, we're going to do this. If we're going to do something for Memorial Day of two thousand twenty, it's got to happen soon.
What does the Y think about this discussion or what are their feelings on it?
Again, if I'm just being honest, I think there's frustrations on both sides of the table. And, and, you know, credit to Tony, partnerships are tough. They're tough, you know? And I think there, there's been changes of leadership over the years on both sides. And, you know, their new CEO came in at a delicate time. And to their credit, with the six-day plan, I mean, they, they pulled that together pretty quickly and I think they made some, they made some big decisions. They, there were some leadership changes in the Delaware Y. There's, you know, really more autonomy where it runs as its own entity away from the regional approach. But they're still in transition. Like their, their director is a interim director, the, the new swimming coach is an interim swimming coach. So, I, I, I really do think they are making the efforts. It's just, you know, we, we have a certain level of service that we want to see. And, and so the swimmers, for example, only having twenty swimmers available and they're working on hiring additional coaches, I think it's just, it's frustrating. It's frustrating and, and, and they're, they're working at it. They, they want to continue the partnership. I just think that we need to set expectations on both sides of the table of, you know, if you're having trouble finding swim coaches, let's work together and get some swim coaches, you know? Because I don't think twenty is hitting the mark for the amount of swimmers that we wanted to see in, in Delaware. But I know that they are working to have a long, a long-term solution for a coach, a long-term solution for an executive director. a long-term solution for, uh, an executive director. They're just not there yet. Um, so we're still in a little bit of a moment of, uh, limbo in, in, in certain regards. Um, but, you know, per our conversation with them today, they, 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 they want to see this work out. If it doesn't work out, then, then they have to prepare as well to what that means for them from the rec services and the outdoor swimming standpoint. Um, but they value us as a partner. Um, so in a perfect world, I think they would want to see the partnership work.
Okay. Moving on, let's do, um, finance director's report.
The report through, uh, the end of August was included in your packet. And, uh, nothing major to report on. We have had a lot of tax refunds, so at some point, whether I do it before the end of the year, it'll be coming back and supplementing the budget to, uh, to, uh, you know, for the increased refunds. Uh, development fee revenues up quite a bit. Um, and, uh, but other than that, budget's pretty much as expected.
Questions for Dean? Okay. Thank you, Dean. City manager's report?
Couple of items. Uh, the historic preservation commission has a meeting, I believe it's this week. Um, one of the, is it this week?
It's Wednesday.
One of the topics is expanding, uh, the HPC boundaries, um, actually modifying the HPC boundaries to include, um, additional regulatory, uh, authority with the HPC on the east side, the near east side. I have a memo that Dave has provided to me on just kind of a refreshing council's collective memory of when we set the HPC up, what those boundaries were, what the transitional boundaries are, what this east side boundary looks like. Um, but you'll see it if you had a chance to read the staff report that Dave prepared, his staff prepared for Wednesday night's meeting. Um, staff is recommending, and I concur, that at this point, we, we not entertain that.
Okay.
Um, I think for a couple of reasons. One, just the capacity, staff capacity, to add, uh, that layer is, is, is a lot of work on our part. Um, and, and I just think we're not at the point right now where we can do that. Plus, there's just some more, I think, philosophical discussions about what level of oversight um, does the HPC have over that, you know, the near east side. So that, um, Dave, I don't know if you wanna chime in, but I, I will provide Dave's background memo. Um, but you may get some feedback from, from HPC members about it, but I, at this point, we...
Thanks, Tom. I think there's maybe two other points I'd make. One, um, we conducted an east side inventory probably about ten, maybe ten-plus years ago at this point, which produced some really incredible history and documented the history of the east side. And at that time, the next steps were to, uh, look to potentially expand the district. And, uh, there was resounding, uh, there was no support for that on the east side at that time. I, I'm not sure that that's really changed at all. Um, the, the history was good. I don't think anybody was interested in expanding the district. And then the other point is that, I mean, we're in the middle of our comprehensive plan, uh, a little bit past the middle of our comprehensive plan, and we're focusing on several, um, areas of particular focus within that plan. The east side is one of those areas. And so it make, doesn't make sense to me to go expand a regulatory area until we complete that policy exercise and, and see what the policy ultimately the city council would like to see as captured in a comprehensive plan with that east side area. That may or may not include a recommendation to look at the potential of expanding the district, or maybe it won't include that. But we, we're right in the middle of that policy, uh, guide right now, so.
So how did this come to fruition then, if it wasn't coming from staff?
It came up, I think...
I think it just came up at a meeting, and they were, they, they, they see things happening on the east side, and they see, um, the boundary jogs a little bit on the east side as well in terms of the historic district overlaying, so they wanted to have a discussion about it. And that, and that's fine, that's prerogative of committee as far as I'm concerned. But I think ultimately, council would have to decide as to whether you...
I'll give you my vote now if you want.
Whether to expand a district or not.
What's that?
So I'll give you my vote now if you want.
In lieu of doing a whole lot of work with the committee in advance of that, if there's a sense of council that, you know, we, we not do that at this time for, I think, some pretty reasonable reason, um, and it's not that it's necessarily off-table forever. Uh, that, that would be helpful to staff at any rate.
Is there general consensus to?
No.
No. No, well, I think that, that's helpful.
Please, no.
Yeah, I agree.
At this point, no interest.
Okay.
We'll, we'll, uh...
We can relay the message.
Report that back. Um, another... If you didn't get a chance, uh, on a lighter note, um, uh, the mural project is too successful. The installations that came out of the workshops earlier this spring. I was at, uh, both locations last week. Um, I spent a little bit of time over at Ross Street. Uh, one of the evenings, they were working, a couple of women pulled up in their car. They grew up in that area. One was, I think, a third or fourth generation Delawarean, uh, and just was, uh, just emotional about just that work of art. And being more inclusive of the community, I was really happy to see that we were able to be a part of that. There was a talk yesterday about it, and there was a lot of compliments to the city and, um, just kind of the, the efforts Ted and his, his staff put into that. Uh, if you haven't had a chance, take a look at the work. You might recognize, um, some of the two people on the mural over at Ross Street. You might recognize some of the people on the mural at Andrew's house, but these were folks who participated in the workshop. So that's, and there's another one on the east side that's supposed to be, um...
Is it you?
What? No, it's not me. It's not me. Um, anyway, so that's, that's exciting. Related to that, Unity Festival this Saturday.
Unity Community.
Unity in the Community Festival this Saturday. Um, uh, I will be in Washington tomorrow and Wednesday with Carolyn, Lee, and Dave in connection with the American Planning Association Great Communities Program. Uh, more to report on that later. Uh, but we will be taking an opportunity to, um, do some advocacy work on behalf of the city. And one of the advocacy items is just the issue with the railroad and just some of the conversations we're having with them about their requirements, um, that they're putting on the city for the point project. So we're gonna, uh, we're gonna talk about that among, among some other things. There's also a piece of legislation that we may be offering testimony in connection with on Wednesday. Kyle may be doing that. It's a piece of legislation that would, uh, tie local governments' hands with respect to using eminent domain for transportation projects, in particular, trail projects. Uh, and that's, that's problematic for a number of reasons, not the least of which, it's an encroachment on home rule. Um, and that, that's fundamentally the issue that we have. So, uh, there's some testimony that Lee has put together in connection with that. Um, and I will be out of town this weekend and the following weekend. Uh, and Kyle will be acting one weekend, he's away the next weekend, and Dean will be acting. So I'll be sending out a memorandum about that. I've got some finish-up work to do in Maryland the first week in October. But I will be here for First Friday, which will be the unveiling of the, uh, the Haze statue. And, uh, it's pretty exciting, pretty exciting. And it was a great jug, I love.
Yeah.
Oh, and finally, I'm gonna pass out the...
They already did.
Did you? Uh, they didn't get them down, that ended the table. Those are the council priorities. Uh, we'll, if you take a look, we were able to finally vocabulate those. Uh, and we'll be doing some follow-up work with you on those.
Okay. Council comments, Mr. Jones?
I have none.
Ms. Keller?
I have a couple. Um, I was asked to speak at the Community Unity Festival. It's this, um, weekend, eleven AM to three PM at Ross Street. Um, so I'll be speaking on behalf of the city. I'm having a park open house. Um, it's the park on the corner of Boulder and Houck, South Houck. And that open house is tomorrow night at Veterans Park from six to eight. Uh, Mr. Ted Miller will be there with me, answering questions and getting feedback from residents on that. It's a neighborhood park. A lot of people are getting confused between a neighborhood park and a community park. So that's, um, giving me a great chance to explain some of the differences, how fees are collected for neighborhood parks, and getting great conversations going. Um, regarding the splash pad decision from the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, um, I listened to that portion of the meeting. Um, I was actually, so the Parks and Rec Board, in case you haven't listened to the meeting, voted to remove two, um, large play toys at the splash pad because of safety issues. Um, when I received a complaint from that particular parent, I spoke to, um, Mr. Kreidler about it. Um, I think that there is a solution that doesn't include removing large sections of play toys that were custom-designed and purchased, um, with levy funds. I worked real closely with Kirsten Kale from Raindrop, and they were the ultimate designers. They knew that we had a brushed concrete surface, and they designed those pieces custom to us. So I think that our first step should be reaching out to Raindrop, explaining some of the issues that we've been having, and getting their suggestions, because they were the, um, designers of it. They, they were the ones that recommended we use a brushed concrete surface. So I say we start there. I'm happy to be part of those conversations. But there has to be a solution that doesn't include just putting something we paid money for in a shed. If redesigning the pieces doesn't work, I'm thinking we could perhaps add a softer surface. Um, there's a whole bunch of different options, and I'd love to be part of solutions that don't include removing.
And we have reached out to Raindrop, and we're requesting a meeting where we just meet on-site and go over those, what are those options are. So I'll let you know when that is and, um, get together.
Perfect.
But in the near future, like in the next month, we wanna make sure that happens.
Perfect. Ted called me after the meeting and just wanted to let all of you know that we're on it.
Okay. Thank you.
I have nothing, thank you.
I have nothing. Just one thing, uh, Main Street and Data ran a shuttle from downtown to even further. That was a, uh, kind of a cooperation between Abbey at eighteen oh eight, because they wanted to do brunch, and, um, Suzie at Main Street, and of course, Data. Uh, so for a buck, you know, you could ride the Big D.
It was fifty cents, wasn't it?
It's a dollar-e, dollar-each way, yeah.
Okay.
So anyway, just have a neat thing to...
You know why you know how it went, how it worked out? Whether they had...
I, I don't know.
I would tell my neighbors who charged for people to park in the yards, they were very, very upset because their yard was empty. That was their gambling money. Like, what is the shuttle doing? But that's Main Street.
It was, it was running non-stop, 'cause I can see it from my window. And there was people jumping on and off.
I know a lot of people that use it.
That's great.
Yes. And I think it helps too to get people from the fair downtown to eat and hang out. So, you know, I thought it was helpful again, so hats off to both of them. That's all I have.
Um, so I'll be out of town, as I said, tomorrow and Wednesday. And then on Saturday, I'm back in Washington again for another honor flight, so twice in one week, it's gonna be crazy. So are you in town this weekend?
I'll be there.
So, okay. Um, I did get stopped several times at the fair this week on different complaints. The last one was on Saturday night. So Pumpre Terrace has been resurfaced. It's gorgeous, but it's become a racetrack. And Pumpre Terrace, down there, it's, yeah. You what?
We should've striped it.
Yeah, wow, that's what I'm talking to this guy. So a young gentleman, sixteen years old, racing, got into the gravel, overcorrected, went into the front of the guy's house. He has two little tiny ones. Hit the porch. It could've been a whole lot worse. Um, I don't know if we can put police sa, and it was three, well, three guys that night racing up and down that street. And then later on, there was a police officer sitting there at the school at Bell watching, so they got drenched. But I don't know if we can look at doing something over there, because someone was very, very upset. He loves that the roads are redone, 'cause they walk all the time, but not for a racetrack.
Well, even I, it's a tough spot to watch, it's so visible, but, uh, honestly, a, a lot of those, as we, as we talked during the meeting on Cobblestone, a lot of those neighborhood speed complaints are from people in the neighborhood, and I suspect that's what the situation was here. So sometimes it just comes down to neighbors being good neighbors, uh, but we'll keep an eye on the area.
These weren't neigh, I mean, these people did not live there. They were just simply racing through, so.
Okay.
Um, but I told, I told them I'd bring it up and see if there's anything that we need to do next. And then you all know about October fourth, you'll all be there, I'm assuming? We do have a resolution that never got read into the record, but it is, it will be, um, in the booklet that gets given out that night. And the ambassador, the Parisway, from, uh, Washington DC ambassador is coming. He'll be here on the third and the fourth. And I'm also meeting with him in DC one of those days, so.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Afternoon, I think.
I don't know. I haven't looked at the itinerary yet. So with that, I look for a motion to adjourn. I have to go pack.
So...
Thanks.
Safe travels all.
Thank you.
Good trip.